I will now call to February 21st, 2017, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would, stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV, to tonight's City Council meeting. Next, we have a consent agenda. There items need to be pulled, if not, accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kavel.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson. Oh, I'm sorry, he's not here. Uh, Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on the vacation of sanitary sewer and water easement for Wood, for White Oak Marketplace.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Planning Commission staff report with attachments, site location map, site aerial map, plat map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 28th, 2017, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, and bill number 4470 vacating the sanitary sewer and water easements. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Before this evening is a request to vacate both a 15-foot sanitary sewer easement and a 15-foot water line easement at the request of the White Oak Marketplace developer. As you can see here on the overhead, on the site map, you can see the approximate location of both of those easements, drawn in there, dashed lines, just to give you point of Here's another view on the property line configuration. The applicant is looking to vacate these, since they're no longer going to be in use with the new development. Other water lines and sanitary sewer easements are placed elsewhere on the property with the redevelopment of White Oak Plaza, and therefore, these two easements are no longer needed. The planning commission did hear this request at their meeting last week and have recommended unanimously approval before you this evening.
Are there any questions, Mr. Allen? Seeing none, so we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Anyone like to introduce the reading of Bill 4470?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4470, an ordinance vacating an existing 15-foot sanitary sewer easement and a 15-foot water line easement located on the west side of Southwest 7 Highway, south of Southwest Sunset Avenue in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4470, an ordinance vacating an easement, an exist, excuse me, an existing 15-foot sanitary sewer easement and a 15-foot water line easement located on the west side of Southwest 7 Highway, south of Southwest Sunset Avenue in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kavel.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4642.
Now, you're gonna have to follow very closely on next things I'm about to say. Item six has been pulled to public hearing. Item seven, we'll have a motion to continue that to the March 6th City Council meeting.
So moved, Your Honor.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries. Items eight and nine, the rezoning has been pulled by the applicant. The amended plan, residential concept plan, is continued to the March 6th City Council meeting. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries. Let's move to items 10 and 11. Public hearing on that. I need a motion to continue that to the March 20th City Council meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries. Now, we'll move down to item 12, the introduction and reading of Bill 4471. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4471, an ordinance approving final plat for the villas at Chapman Farms, second plat, lots 56 through 84, tracks G, J, K, and L, replat of part of lot 19, Chapman Farms, first plat, lots 1 through 35.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Sir, second?
Second.
And discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries.
Second reading of Bill Number 4471, an ordinance approving final plat for the villas at Chapman Farms, second plat, lots 56 through 84, tracks G, J, K, and L, replat of part of lot 19, Chapman Farms, first plat, lots 1 through 35.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kavel.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4643.
Next, we have a resolution, the adoption of Resolution 13-2017.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All I need is a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries. That brings us down to a presentation about a Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board. Commission Chair Bob Martin, former captain with the Blue Springs Police Department. And you might introduce your other member that's back there to give you moral support. Ms. Cindy.
We have, uh, well, thanks for letting me be here tonight, and we do have Cindy Hood, fellow board member who came by to give me some moral support tonight. Take about 10 minutes of your time, kind of give you the Public Safety Citizens Advisory It was a pretty good year. I didn't start until May with the board, so I can only speak really on the issues from May through the end of the year, but in talking to other board members, there weren't any significant issues. I don't want to jinx ourselves, but there weren't any significant issues for the board to look at this year, so it was just pretty much reviewing the public safety sales tax expenditures and assisting where we can with the police department's request. And so, we'll give you kind of a brief here. The history of the board started in 2009 on recommendation by the mayor, and he had previously appointed a Public Safety Advisory Task Force that six members came up with, and they came up with some suggestions after looking at the police department, and police department's been addressing those since then, and we have, I think, two items left on that original list, one of which we're gonna talk about this evening. The board consists of six members, comprised of two residents from each of the three council districts. Then we have a non-voting members that include representatives from the Blue Springs Police Department, usually chief, employee, or major. Member from the city council, currently now is Jeff Kavel, and then we have a student from Blue Springs South this year, Connor C- Common, I always mispronounce his last name, been a very good addition to the board. And we've been meeting monthly, we had 11 meetings in the 2015, 2016, excuse me. One was canceled because of a lack of quorum. Quick slide of the board members from District 1, Cindy Hood, Jerry Kayler. District 2 is myself and Patrick Mitchell. District 3 is Grant Bowerman, Wes Grant Bowerman, and Natalie Belgins, and then we have the chief, Jeff Kavel, and Connor Kamen. Quick review of the purpose and changes of the responsibilities of the board. To review and propose changes in the parking and traffic ordinances, we did inherit the traffic commission's duties this year, were formally transferred to the Public Safety Advisory Board. Review and propose changes in animal control ordinances, and review and propose changes to the public safety sales tax, financial policy, and monitor the public safety sales tax spending. Our authority to conduct annual Public Safety Community Forum, we did that in November this year. The topic was the intra-agency cooperation between CJC, Blue Springs Police Department, and the Central Jackson County Emergency Management Agency. That was presented by Sergeant Alan Kentz and Eddie Saffel from the Fire Department. Was an interesting presentation. It seemed to go over well, and we had, for my first time, I thought we had a pretty good crowd. I can't compare it to others, 'cause I wasn't here, but we had probably 10 or 15, or upwards of 20 citizens that were here for it. Questions for the community by the public. We had a, Kim set up a live feed so that people could text in messages, comments, questions, and understand that that went well. Our authority to advise and make recommendations on matters related to the police department, particularly the budget, the motorcycle unit, we'll talk a little bit about here in just a second, alternatives to current SUVs and patrol cars. I think the administration's always looking to have the best equipment for the officers at the most cost-effective that we can find. Review recommendations of the Public Safety Advisory Task Force, 11 of the 13 have been implemented. One, the motorcycle unit was scheduled to be completed, and motorcycles were delivered, and then, if you haven't heard, we didn't get what we ordered, what the chief ordered, and they've been sent back, so we're on about a 60-day delay. They will be here. Then the other recommendation from the original task force was a physical fitness and wellness program. I know the chief continues to look at that, and I just would say it's pending at this point. One of our other responsibilities, provide oversight of the expenditures derived from the public safety sales tax. We do that through monthly and quarterly reviews. We've invited Christine from Finance to give us a couple plasses on how to read the financial reports that they prepare for us each month, makes it a little more understandable, and I'm almost there, still gotta have a meeting with you this next week, Christine. From that original task force, some, just a quick review of the objectives that they did complete. Of course, the radio system was completed, and it's working as it was intended. In fact, I think they were doing the second touch on the radios, which means simply that they were finessing our original guess on the, all the talk groups that we needed and that. The goal of that was to have 100% coverage, and I, all the testing I did when I was still employed as the captain here indicate we've pretty well met that in Blue Springs. I haven't heard of any major issues with the radio system. Goal three, to obtain interoperability with CJC, IPD, and other agencies, that radio system handles that and a lot more. We are now able to respond anywhere in the state of Missouri and communicate, and other police departments in the state can respond here and communicate. That wasn't the case when we went to Joplin, and that had a lot to do with how I made recommendations to the chief when we decided to design the radio system and the talk groups we put in there. We prepared for a major event either in Blue Springs or Blue Springs personnel responding somewhere else in the state. Additional personnel was one of the goals, the sales tax. There's always a hiring process in the police department now, we're just at that size, but they work hard to meet full manpower and keep it there. There's always the hiring process going on. With the process, it was to, more officers on the street would improve our response time. This, this graph I wanted you to look at shows that over the time, from 2012 through the end of 2016, every category of our response in the police department has improved, and every year, we've pretty well made an improvement. There will be a spot when it will bottom out, because you're just not gonna be sitting in front of a call every time it comes out. So we'll always have a little bit of a response time, but we are in good shape, haven't dealt with any issues of response time being too slow. If you look at the middle section of that, since 2012, 2016, the number of calls have increased every year. The priority calls went up from 2012 through 2016, 131 emergency calls, 1,756 priority 2 calls, and 1,055 priority 3 calls, and yet, the response time for each of those has We're down to 5 minutes and 56 seconds on priority 1 calls, 9 minutes 33 seconds on priority 2, and 14 minutes and 20 seconds on priority 3, which are report-type calls and non-emergency calls. Pretty good stuff. One of the other goals, improve neighborhood uncommitted patrol time by 12.3%, with the addition of the additional officers provided by the sales tax and commanders of patrol unit working on some district assignment in-house. I, I think we're there. I know we met more patrol, I can't guarantee it was 12.3%. Increase animal control personnel availability by 25%. We did that, it's been completed. Goal four, reduce the time officers spend processing prisoners in the holding area by 20%. I think we met that when we went to 24/7 DSO officers. Goal five, reduce the time evidence and property is returned, auctioned or legally disposed of by 33%, while increasing available pickup hours to the public. That's been completed. Part of it has to do with the new building, part of it has to do with additional personnel that was paid for by the sales tax. Hiring status, at the time I typed this, all 17 positions had been met. Facilities and equipment, goal one was to provide detective unit space where all detectives can work in proximity to share data and efficiency. New building did that, met that goal, right in same area, have a conference room they can share, training room they can share. Provide convenient, secure, separate reporting areas where citizens can receive assistance promptly and confidentially. That's been done, there is the safe room off of the lobby out here, and with the additional space, we just don't have to interview victims in a public space anymore. Goal five, reduce the number of times that animal control picks up, pickups are refused by 25% through a holding area for animals and working with area of private kennels. We developed Barrett Park, it's working, there, you'll notice and highlight, there's a punch list item, are still being completed on that building, and they are working on it, so. Then, next slide is just the pictorial of public safety sales tax for 2016, and you can see that the finance department did a great job of forecasting in advance, from what they forecast to the actual. Came in at 3.9% over what they forecast, but for doing it almost 18 months out when you first start that, that's pretty remarkable, in my opinion. Our meetings, we changed meeting dates to the fourth Tuesday of the month. Gives us a little bit of chance to get information out to the board members earlier, so they can review all the reports they need to and be prepared for the meeting, so we moved from second to the fourth Tuesday at 6:30. Next annual public forum will be November 28th at 6:30, probably in this room. And ready to take any questions or discussion?
Are there any questions, Chairman Martin? Seeing none, I guess you did a great.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for all your years of service with the city, and thank you for your years of service now with the.
They can't get rid of me.
Yeah, all right, great. And I guess the success of the Citizens Police Academy's been doing very well as well, so, and just wanted to put a plug in for that before.
I know, I get still invited to do a couple presentations there a year when one of the other captains isn't available, and it's always a great crowd, energetic people there, so I think it's doing fine.
Mm-hmm. Good, good. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Martin, and thank you, memberhood, for being his, having his back. Okay, that brings us, it's kind of a prelude to another exciting presentation that we're getting ready to have, and that's the audit. Christine.
Thank you for that introduction, much appreciated. Well, good evening, I'm Krista Hughes with RSM, and I'm here to go through the audit results for the 2016 fiscal year. So as you recall, usually the kind of the items we touch upon, there's required communications with city officials, and that's in, those are usually in the documents, the stapled packet that kind of goes through topics that we, as the auditors, give you updates on at the conclusion of the audit, and then I have just a few slides that'll kind of summarize some of the key financial areas in the CAFER. Obviously, the CAFER is a large document, you can read that as your leisure, maybe after this evening, so we tried to go through and provide some information of the general fund, and then a few of the enterprise funds. So as far as kind of a recap of the audit itself, first item to note that in the CAFER you will see that we issued an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest opinion that we, as auditors, can give financials, meaning they're presented in accordance with GAAP. Second item there, we'd like to highlight if there was any significant accounting policies that the city would have been required to implement this year, mainly just to look at if there's anything new or significantly different in your financials this year. So the city did implement GASB 72. There's not a huge difference in the CAFER if you were to compare it this year to prior year. What it relates to is investments, it added fair value disclosures, so it didn't change how anything was accounted by the city, but it just added disclosures on how investments that you hold are fair, measured at fair value and rates those, and really with the, for the most part, you all are in US government agency securities, so those are pretty straightforward, at least as how they're valued by your pricing agencies. A lot of this had some bigger impacts on maybe like statewide pension plans that are allowed to go into a lot of alternative investments to increase transparency, but you do have all the required disclosures per the GASB in your report to address that implementation. The required mitigations also goes through management judgments and accounting estimates, and what that means is, as part of our audit process, we go through and look at areas of the financials that have a component of subjectivity. You know, accounts or management is applying a policy, for example, capital assets, they estimate what they think is a reasonable depreciable life on those. So as part of the audit, we go through and make sure the policy is being followed, and also that it's consistent with what we would expect to see with other cities, and so you'll see noted in the documents, the areas we looked at, and on all, each of those, we concluded that the process was, and the estimates by management were determined to be reasonable. Next couple items, audit adjustments, there were none, that's always a positive to be able to report, you really ideally don't want your auditors coming in and doing bookkeeping. So this says a lot to the trial balances and financials were provided by the finance department, that we're not coming in during the audit and finding significant errors. So that's always, like I said, nice to be able to note of the group we're working with. Uncorrected immaterial misstatements, there were none, those would just be items, sometimes in an audit, you might find areas of misstatement, but it's immaterial, that doesn't need to be recorded in the financials, and we'll summarize those in the documents, in the audit packet, but there were none this year. Disagreements with management or overall difficulties or issues that came up during the audit, there were none. As far as future accounting pronouncements, areas to kind of give you a heads up on, these are disclosed, or at least those that are expected to have an impact potentially on the financials in the future, and footnote 12. The couple that I wanted to note, so if you recall, last year, the city implemented GASB 68, which was the pension standard, so for pension plans you participate in, if you have really an unfunded piece, that was added to the balance sheet as a liability in the governmental activities. The GASB has formally approved the exact same really accounting standards for OPEB. So just so you know, in a few years, I think it would be 2018 or 19 for you all, you would also add that liability. Really, the unfunded portion you have in that plan is not significant at this time, less than a million dollars, but just so you know, that will be a very similar standard that will be required to be implemented, and just to note, that's not, that liability's not recorded in one of your fund financials, similar to the pension, it's recorded at the full accrual level. And then the other one to note that they've passed, it will be effective for all, for you all next year, is tax abatement disclosures, that's become kind of an increased area of interest for a lot of people as cities enter into agreements with developers that result in maybe tax breaks on the property tax side. They've added a GASB that you will disclose any arrangements like that that you enter into, and what the estimated tax difference is on those, and it'll also apply for entities that are impacted by that. So for example, school districts, you know, as maybe cities or counties enter into those types of agreements that impact the property taxes that flow through to them, that will kind of be found of, really probably helpful for the readers to see property tax reductions as a result of those types of incentive agreements, so. Just a couple that'll be coming down the next couple of years for you all. And then the last item here, if there was any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, those would be summarized in the documents, and there were none, so you'll just kind of see the standard language that defines those, but again, that's a positive to be able to report, that neither of those were noted, as far as the control testing we looked at. So here on this slide, you'll see the general fund, which is obviously the city's operating fund, a detailed breakout of the revenue and the different types that flow through the fund. Really, as you look at each of the categories, I believe this is an eight-year, or I'm sorry, nine-year trend shown here, at least when you compare 2016 to 15, you'll see almost all the categories were very consistent with the prior year, as far as revenue coming into that fund. The next slide here, again, for the general fund, it's expenditures presented by function, it does exclude capital outlay and debt service, but expenditures in the other areas, and again, really, when you look at the categories year over year, I think when you compare in total, was within 4% of the prior year, and no, no really significant fluctuations in categories year over year, so you can kind of see again, the trend over the last nine years, expenditures in this fund in each category and function. Here is the, for the general fund, fund balance by category, so again, this is the equity of the general fund, broken out by the criteria or the categories that you're required to report them in. So the top, the blue, represents non-spendable, so what that usually represents is prepaid or, or loans that the general fund has made to other funds, so it represents really kind of a non-spendable assets, not really available to the general fund. Committed is your largest category. This is where you reserve for your budget stabilization and your emergency reserves. And so at year end, I think your balance was around 7.4 million. So committed means those actions that have been approved by council, but those are things that are really kind of earmarked in fund balance for those two areas. Assigned are the, is the area that management is allowed to earmark funds for. So you can see kind of the amount of equity that's, that's assigned at year end, usually for encumbrances and things like that. Legal debt margin, obviously you have a large flexibility here, but this just kind of compares with something you're required to report, the assessed value, what your debt limit is, and then what your bonded debt actually is for the city at this time. So you'll see the legal debt margin, as of year end, was still 134 million of the difference between those two. And then your enterprise funds, which are those that operate under the business type function, which would be your water sewer, golf, and the new field house. So here, going through some of these categories, operating revenue went up about two and a half, I'm sorry, 3 million this year. Most of that is in, water sales went up a lot this year, about two and a half million. So you'll see there in the green category that operating revenue in 2016 went up mainly as a result of that, and then also increased operating activity in the field house fund this year. Expenses and depreciation stayed pretty consistent. Net income, we show that one excluding depreciation since that's a known cash expenditure. So there you can kind of see net income increased this year by an amount pretty consistent with what happened with your operating revenue increase. And then cash flows from operations, just so you can see, your business type funds are the only ones that present cash flow statements. And operating is usually considered the area of interest to kind of see how your rates are doing with the cash flows they're generating. So you'll also see an increase in that category this year compared to prior year, so. I think the only other thing I meant to mention in the CAFER, you'll, you will see the city was awarded GFOA certificate last year, so that's included in this year's report for the 2015 financials. So again, that's, that's only, again, a very positive to be able to report. Bond rating agencies, look at that when they're evaluating your credit rating. So again, that's good. I'm sure they're submitting again and we'll receive that for this coming CAFER as well. So, any questions for me on the audit or the financials?
Are there any questions? Councilman Fowler.
Yeah, this is more of a, I guess, in the comprehensive annual report, and I don't know if that's, is that Adobe up there? Is, is our agenda online electronically?
Yeah.
If he can, can bring that up real quick. I wanted to point to a specific page and talk to it for a second.
Sure. Do you want me to hit some of that? I'm not sure where to go, sorry.
I, I think it's already, that wasn't it, already up?
The Adobe right there.
Oh. Oh. Okay. That's not it, though?
Oh.
Yeah, it was, it's actually page 121 in that report right there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's down quite a bit, I think.
Page 121 of the CAFER?
Yes.
Okay. So this is one of your stat schedules? Oh, shoot. I'm sorry.
It went away.
Okay.
121, there you go.
And then maybe magnify that a little bit because it's a little bit tough to see, but I guess I wanted to just, I, I really like the format here. You put it, yeah, a kind of a trend of the, of the past 10 years and kind of the one, two, three, fourth line item down there is street overlay. Going back in 2008, there was 55 miles, 2009, 48 miles, et cetera. And I just did a quick review of that. From 2008 to 2012, we did an average of 42 miles a year, which I think is a very good number, averaging 42 miles a year. But most recently, in the past two years, we've done like a 14 and a 10, so it kind of averages to 12. And I think we're still spending the same amount of money, but it doesn't look like we're getting nearly the amount of road coverage. I realize economics plays into that as well.
You're interested?
I will, and I'll defer also to our Public Works Director, Chris Sandy. Will remind you that one year, the council made the decision to direct the 2.3 million for street overlay to the Woods Chapel match. So that is probably the zero that you see in 2014, and the prices of the commodity has fluctuated. Mr. Sandy, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yes, sir. When you look at the 2008 through 2012 numbers, those are actually reported in lane miles. The 2015 and 16 numbers appear to be actually reported in centerline miles. So if you double those two numbers, the 14 and the 10 and a half, you would actually get the lane miles of road that were done.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense then. So.
Yeah, yeah.
That take care of you.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to know the trend there and wanted to, yeah.
And that's a good thing to note. So this is in, in your CAFER, this is the statistical section. So the, the GASB defines the schedules you present here, but yeah, there's a lot of helpful schedules and you kind of describe it. This section is meant to be kind of a trend analysis, so most of these schedules, you're required to present either six or 10 years, and it goes through a lot of revenue and debt information, but then some operational stats, similar to the page you're looking at.
Yeah, I really appreciate seeing those. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Johnson has a question. Christian?
Kristin, just real quickly, regarding the new requirement for the tax abatement reporting, how is that different than what the state of Missouri requires for us to produce an annual tax increment finance report or abatement report that we do annually? I suppose it's in addition to?
Yeah, this will focus on, this will go through, you'll give, I mean, it might be some repeated information. This will be a footnotes in the CAFER, so you'll go through, and I probably don't know all the disclosures exactly since it's not yet been implemented, but for the most part, you'll go through and identify when you've entered into agreements, kind of who, who the developer is, what the estimated amount of the property tax reductions are that was offered to them as a result of entering into that. And I apologize, I don't know all of them off the top of my head, but it'll kind of focus on that. So in general, people can see the incentives that have been offered to developers to come into a city or county or whatever it might be, what they've been offered as a result of that. And so like I said, there's, there's kind of two main things in the GASB. It's those, for those that are entering into the agreements, and then also those, kind of like I mentioned as an example, you know, I have a few school district clients where property tax funding is their largest revenue source, but they know that, while it's been hard for them to quantify in the past, what they know their revenue reductions have potentially been because of cities, you know, agreement, some of these agreements. So it'll help them quantify and they'll report to readers, here's what our estimated property tax revenue reductions were as a result of some of these agreements. So it'll kind of hit both sides depending on what type of entity you are, whether or not you're the reporting entity entering into these agreements, or if your revenue has been impacted as a result of these.
Just, just a comment, and we already provide that information through the required annual incentive tax increment finance report. So it sounds like this is an additional piece of that. So a reader or somebody in the public could obtain it either through the, our tax increment finance or incentive report versus the CAFER and the GASB requirement.
Right. It will require, be required to be in the CAFER in the year you implement it, so that would be the only difference. But yeah, depending on how that information is available to other readers, it'll kind of be consolidated now.
Any other one ask?
Thank you for that report.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yes, I would imagine with this report, Ms. Kates, we're going to be on what consecutive number of getting that recognition? About 40?
I, I think I looked, yeah.
Yeah, somewhere in that neighborhood. We're working on it. All right, very good. Thank you so much. That brings us to item number 13, but before we ask for an introduction, I mean, 16. I'm looking up above, since, number 16, before I ask for an introduction, Councilman Carter and Councilman Culpepper were involved when we interviewed candidates for the city attorney position. I think probably one of the happiest people sitting up here tonight is Mr. McDonnell, because after 28 years of being Blue Springs City Attorney, he had to come back in here and kind of fill in while we did that search. And, and I suppose that the next council meeting, you will be notably absent.
I'll watch it on TV.
You're watching it on TV. Online or something, right. So anyway, the person we chose and made the job offer to is Jaclyn Summer, and she goes by Jackie, and she's in the audience tonight, so Jackie, what you stand so the rest of the council members can see you. This is Jackie, and with the adoption of this ordinance, which is required by the charter, she will officially become, once I sign it, I haven't signed it, she signed it, but I haven't signed it yet, but I will, tomorrow. She will become our city attorney, and we're shooting for the first of next month. So anyway, we just wanted you to meet Jackie before we make this introduction for those that didn't have an opportunity to meet her yet. So thank you for being here tonight, Jackie. That being said, who would like to introduce it?
Your Honor, it would be my great pleasure to introduce this.
Okay.
All right. First reading of bill number 4472, an ordinance approving an employment agreement with Jaclyn A. Summer as city attorney.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second.
Second.
Discussion.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4472, an ordinance approving an employment agreement with Jaclyn A. Summer as city attorney.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quavel?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, give an ordinance number 4644.
Upon my signature tomorrow and become official. Welcome. That brings us to merril announcements. If you read my state of the city address as well as you saw a press release, Chief McCoy is going to be retiring at the end of September. He's brought a lot to the department, and we'll have plenty of times for accolades and all, but I wanted to get that out there, let you know that Chief McCoy is going to retire after 15 years of service and has seen a lot happen during those 15 years. So we appreciate you. The other thing is on a sad note that most of you probably already know, is we lost Grant Byerman on the 15th. He succumbed to a long battle of six years with melanoma. And as I understand right now, that he will be interned on March 10th with the private ceremony at the Missouri Veteran Cemetery in Higginsville, but there is a memorial service that next day on March 11th at Lakeland, is it Lakeland Community Church on Coburn Road? And most of you have probably seen that big building there. So anyway, keep Jane and the, and the children and grandchildren in your prayers. That brings me to Thoughts to Punda, and this will conclude the Black History Month, and tonight comes from Wilmar Rudolph. Most of you probably know her, I bet she could outrun all of us. And I quote, "Never underestimate the power of dreams and the influence of the human spirit. We are all the same in this notion. The potential for greatness lives within each of us," end quote. That being said, Jackie, you might watch the next action, is I will defer to the city attorney for a motion that Councilman Carter will so move.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is for the council to go into closed session pursuant to section 610.021, sub-paragraph 2, revised statutes of Missouri for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel relating to real estate, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So move.
The second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quavel?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We will be excused to the council executive conference room for the executive session.